Call this council meeting to order, or regular meeting, March 4, 2014. At the time, could we have a call, a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Vias.
Here.
Mayor Protem McAcrin.
Here.
Mayor Cox.
Thank you very much. At this point in time, is, for this portion, we have the public comment section. I have one card of an individual that wants to address the council. And at this time, we will hear that individual. And I would remind you that this is, I don't know what the subject matter is, but it's not on the agenda. We cannot engage in debate. If it's a matter of public importance, staff will get back to you at a later time. And you have three minutes. So, Mr. Scott Markovich, if you'd come to the microphone.
Thank you. And I am Scott Markovich, and it's just, I've been wanting to take the time to visit each of the city councils in the high desert. Where I'm from, I'm from the San Bernardino Mountains. We don't have city councils. We're run exclusively by the county. And it's just been part of my commitment to see what's going on in each city. And I've taken the time, the last two months, to go to Apple Valley and Hisperia. And now, you're on the list. And next week, hopefully, or next month, I'll hit Barstow. And then, I think Needles might have a city council, too. So, I know that the last four years, there's been a lot of significant hurdles, especially in the high desert regarding many things. And I know that you guys had some significant issues regarding infrastructure. And I just want to commend how, in the face of a lot of opposition and kind of controversy that you've kept the city moving forward. And all the cities have done that. Not necessarily in agreement, but taken the time to compromise and to work together for the good of the constituents and the people you represent. So, it's commendable. And in these times, we don't do this, as you all know, for pay. It's sacrificing. And I just, there's no controversy here. Just want to encourage you to keep doing your job, and doing the good job that you're doing. And always think first of your citizens. And try to throw away any entrenched feelings that you have. So, that's it. And I look forward to coming back after your out-of-close session, and seeing how you guys, ladies, work together and move your city forward. And I think there's a lot of potential here in the high desert. And I think if the cities and everybody works together with their government, I think we have so much potential to get the economy going and attract jobs. Again, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And you are aware that our regular council meeting will start at 6:00?
What?
Our regular count, we go into an executive session just in a couple of minutes, but then we come back, and then we have our regular meeting at 6:00.
Right. Yeah, she explained that to me. It was a little bit confusing, but, I mean, everybody has a little different protocol. So, that's...
All right. Thank you, thank you. We have no further comments from the individuals at this time. There's no one in the council chambers. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We have closed session on seven different items tonight. Items A and B under the airport authority. The first is existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. That actually has a companion item for the city council under item C. That is litigation between the SEC and the city of Victorville. The case numbers, et cetera, set forth on the agenda. Item B is real property negotiations pursuant to government code 5495-6.8. And this concerns buildings at the airport, buildings number 518 and 520. Negotiating parties, et cetera, are all set forth on the agenda. Items D and E are anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D4. Both have, deal with one potential case in each instance. Item F is anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D2. And there are certain facts and circumstances pertaining to that that are set forth on the agenda. And lastly, item G is real property negotiations pursuant to government code 5495-6.8. This item actually is for consideration by the Victorville Housing Trust, as opposed to the city council. It concerns property APN number 39521209. And the negotiating parties are the Housing Trust Board, Keith Metzler, and CJC Holdings.
Heads up for staff. We want to see a map or location on these items that requires to take an action. Property, go ahead, Mr. Attorney.
To the extent there is any reportable action on any of these items, we will either report it at the conclusion of the closed session, or at the commencement of the regular session.
On item number 11, we have a claim. It isn't, it isn't a lawsuit at this point. It seems to me that it could easily raise to that. Can we discuss that in executive session?
It's not on the closed session agenda, unfortunately, so we have to adjournize it as such. If there's an urgency matter to take, you'd have to make a finding that, one, the matter arose after the posting of the agenda. That's going to be difficult to do, given that you have the letter before you. And, two, that there's an urgency with respect to that item.
Okay, then, when we get to that point, it's kind of consent. Madam Clerk, would you remind me, not particularly this particular case, but the subject matter included in this claim, I'd like to schedule that for an executive session with the city council. We have no further items. At this time, we will adjourn to an executive session at 5:06. We're going to call the council meeting to order. Sorry, we run a little bit late, but it's 6:03. So, if you will bear with us just a minute, we have a lot of new information. I'm trying to get it in order before I make a complete fool of myself. Just a fool is okay, but not a complete fool. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Vias.
Here.
Mayor Protem McAcrin.
Here.
Mayor Cox.
Here. Mr. City Attorney, for the announcement from the closed session items.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We had seven closed session items. The items are all set forth fully on the agenda. Several were, sorry, items A and C were existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. And the names of the parties and the case numbers set forth on the agenda. Item B was real property negotiations pursuant to government code 5495-6.8. Items D and E were anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D4. Item F was anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D2. And with respect to that, there are certain facts and circumstances that are set forth on the agenda. And lastly, item G was actually an item for consideration by the housing trust. It was put under the city council agenda, dealt with real property negotiations for parcel number 39521209. Negotiating parties being CJC Holdings and the Housing Trust Board negotiated Keith Metzler. At this point, there is no reportable action with respect to any of those items.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Any corrections, clarifications from the staff? If not, at this point in time, we're going to have pledge allegiance and the invocation first, and pledge allegiance. The invocation is, I believe, Curtis Green, I can't, here it is, okay. Reverend Curtis Green from the Burning Bush Baptist Church. And please remain standing after the invocation for the pledge of allegiance by our Victorville Police Chief, Sam Lucia.
You bow your heads, please. Here, Lord, we come tonight just acknowledging who you are first, for what you've done in all of our lives, Lord God. Lord, your word says to pray for the leaders that have authority over you, Lord God. So, we pray for our leadership from the federal, down to the state, down to the county, down to our local leaders, Lord God. Continue to give them wisdom and guidance, Lord God, and let all their actions be done in accordance with your will. We ask also that you would protect their families, Lord God, as they, and let nothing sacrificed in their family lives, Lord God, for them doing duty, their civic duty. In the name of Jesus, we pray.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam City Clerk, would you present the agenda and any changes, additions, or deletions?
City Council of the city of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby, and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to government code section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the city council. And there are several revisions to tonight's agenda. There are revisions to items A1 and A2 that are on the dais for the city council and available for the public's review. On items A1 and A2, letters have been submitted by attorney Corey Briggs with exhibits.
On both A1 and A2? Yes, okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And there is also a letter that was just received from attorney Diana Corloni.
On A2?
On A2. And on consent calendar, item C11, there is additional information from the risk manager.
I'm sorry, I didn't, the...
Item C11.
Seven, but the additional information is, changed in the text?
It's on the dais. For item C11, it's a letter from the risk manager.
We want this to go as smoothly as possible, but when we get information at the last second, I want to make sure that the council members have had a chance to read and understand. And so, we may have to take a break, if it becomes necessary, to ensure that we have considered all the evidence that has been submitted to us, or any consideration that we might make. Any questions of staff at this point? First item?
For all the agenda revisions that I have.
Okay, thank you. The first item that we have on the council is an appeal hearing.
Excuse me, Mayor Cox, there is a presentation before the regular items.
Who's going to make the presentation? Sorry, I'm sorry about that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name's Sam Lucia, I'm your police chief. In a minute, you're going to hear from the Project Hope team. But before you do, I want to underscore that countywide, addressing countywide homelessness is something that's very important to the sheriff of this county. And he's placed a great deal of emphasis on it since he has become our sheriff. It's too often that we see incidents of panhandling near the freeways, and we all don't like to see the encampments, and they're concerning. So, I'm going to turn this over to Sergeant Rob McCoy. He is the leader of this team. And they're going to share with you what the Project Hope is all about. Rob?
Thanks, Cap. Good evening, council. As Captain Lucia mentioned, my name's Rob McCoy. I present the, represent the Hope team. I'm a sergeant with the Sheriff's Department. Hope stands for homeless outreach proactive enforcement, and it represents the sheriff's desire to better deal with issues related to the homeless population. The traditional law enforcement method has been to try to arrest our way out of the homeless problem, and we know that's not going to happen. We'll give a very brief overview of this program. I'd like to introduce the team. It's Corporal Reggie Pahia, Deputy Mike Jones.
And Jeff Collins.
And if we could also get, Brandon DeValta's in the back, and he's probably going to handle the PowerPoint for you. So, gentlemen?
Good evening. Not working. As we know, homelessness is a complex social problem that impacts the quality of life in the community. We have to recognize a fine line between homeless as a criminal and social issue. Often, these disorders of homelessness are difficult to enforce because they're criminal, but at the same time, they're a social issue. Criminalization measures move the homeless population away from taking services that are out there, and make it more difficult for them to move out of homelessness due to costs of incarceration and law enforcement costs, related costs. The departments use destructive alternatives to the criminalization of homelessness. And when cities work together with the homeless and advocate towards solutions to homeless, instead of punishing those for, who are homeless or poor, everyone can benefit. Sheriff McMahon implemented the homeless outreach team, as Captain Lucia shared. Our mission is to balance a proactive outreach program, and to ultimately goal, is, the ultimate goal is to reduce the recidivism, incarceration, and reduce the cost, not just to the department, but to taxpayers in general. The vision of Hope is to improve the quality of life throughout San Bernardino County by reducing the crime associated with homelessness. This is our team. The Hope program is a proactive approach intended to ultimately reduce calls for service and other resources. A community policing philosophy will be used to link the homeless population with resources from throughout the county. A commu, I'm sorry. The objective is to stop the revolving door. You know, most of our contacts are reoccurring contacts, the panhandler that's out there on a weekly or daily basis, and sometimes taking them to jail, wherever that may be. And they're just back out there doing the same thing the next day. And one of the things is getting the community to realize that not all panhandlers are homeless. A lot of them are doing it for addictions that they may have. County's been separated into three regions due to the size of our team initially here. So, there's a, Jeff Collins is in charge of the desert. I have the East Valley, and Reggie has the West Valley down in the Valley area. And we're working with each station. They're assigning a community resource officer at each station to be the link between that community and us. Our program, we're going to be the ones to get the resources onboard from all areas of the county, and to work with them, to, I'm sorry, to work with the stations to get those resources to the available homeless people that are out there that are willing to. And we know it's not going to be an overnight thing. Some of the studies from other agencies that do this average it to 75 contacts before a chronic homeless person may take the services. Some of the costs related to homelessness, a site release, a misdemeanor site release, which they're booked into the jail and they're out within four to six hours, is about $192 in booking fees. If they were to stay, it's $54 a day, and approximately $290 in court fees for that one citation. And we know they go to court multiple times before that's caused, so the average cost is around $1,000 on a citation for panhandling, or illegal camping, or some municipal ordinances. The average taxpayer cost is about $34,000 annually. There've been studies based out of LA that say the average taxpayer cost per homeless individual, chronic homeless individual, is $34,000. Last year's count, in the county of San Bernardino, there was 3,460 homeless, which 441 were identified as chronic, meaning they live on the street for a year or more. Based on that number and the $34,000, it's over $12 million on taxpayers each year just to care for those homeless. Some of the cleanup costs with flood control and Caltrans down in the Valley area was over $100,000. This is a photo, the riverbed area up here. We did a pilot program. We started this kind of at a central station down in the Valley, and working with the office of the sheriff, we got approved to do a pilot program. We did 10 days. The sheriff asked us if we could do a couple more in the Valley, and then come up to the desert area to see if the need was as necessary up here as it is in the Valley. So, we came up here in between the two areas. We contacted 227 homeless, assisted 111. And by assisting, we're giving them some type of resource to go to. If it's up here, the Victor Valley Rescue Mission is a huge proponent of homelessness and assisting them. 26 were housed. We worked with, teamed up with Department of Behavior Health, Veterans Affairs, different organizations. If they met a certain criteria, we got them housed into transitional housing, which long-term led to permanent housing. We did make 17 arrests. Most of those were for miscellaneous warrants that we give them a new citation. There was a couple, there were parolees at large, and for stolen property. Jeff Collins is going to speak to you guys a little more about the future.
Counsel, I'm going to kind of briefly describe where the future of this program, we'd like to take it, with the sheriff's direction. First of all, we'd like to branch out. Right now, we're out on the street, we're out on patrol trying to do this. But we'd also like to carry it over into our corrections bureau, and have some deputies assigned to our jail facilities in order to facilitate those that are coming out of custody and being released back into the public without these resources. We'd like to offer those to them, and get them on their feet as they come out. We also like to tackle the youth homeless problem. It's an increasingly large endeavor that we're learning as we're working with the student, excuse me, the superintendent of schools, some of the local school districts as well. And we're also going to try to do some community events, such as stand-down events, which are not the classic sweeps that we've heard of in the past, where we're going to go down to the riverbed and, and just, you know, take everybody away. We're going to actually go down there as a, as a large group, and bring our resources with us to get these people help where they are. And also like to sponsor some resource fairs, where we can have all our service providers at one central location, where we can actually have a big group event, where they can come and also meet those resources as well. Just another photo of us. This is in the Highland Central area, where we hit a couple weeks ago. And what we're quickly learning by implementing this program, like I said, this is about our sixth week in existence, is there are several hundred homeless service providers and resources throughout the county. However, all of them right now are kind of operating individually. Our goal is to cooperate, get everybody in together, and collaborate together, so that we can attack it as a, as a large group, so that we all can, can offer something to the pot. We are also encouraging nonprofit faith-based organizations as well to join in with us, so that we can offer their services as well. A lot of those are very helpful. And like it says, we welcome all, anyone that's involved in any homeless assistance, we are welcoming to our team, so that we can further pursue that endeavor. A large part of it, like you mentioned earlier, is with the panhandlers. That, the majority of those that we're discovering are not necessarily homeless, but what we are trying to tackle is, is a positive change, not spare change campaign. This was started down in our Valley area, and it's something we want to make aware with our business owners, and just the general community in the high desert as well, where instead of giving spare change to the panhandlers to contribute to a legitimate organization that does help the homeless. And everyone is important. No one's too big or too small to be involved in this. We are looking to be a leader in the community, to incorporate, like I said, everybody. Every agency and resource has an important part of our program to make these long-term changes, and everybody is, is vital to it. The number one thing we're trying to do is improve quality of life, not only for the homeless people, to bring them up, but also for, for the general community as well. Quality of life is big for our sheriff, and that's something we want to, want to improve. And this is just a list of our homeless outreach team. Like you mentioned, we divided the county into three areas. West Valley is going to be our Corporal Reggie Pahia. East Valley coordinator is Deputy Mike Jones, who spoke prior to me. I will be the high desert coordinator, so I will be covering this Victorville area. And we have two reserve deputies that are also assisting us in a very large way, and our supervisor, Rob McCoy.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn it back over to him for a minute.
And we'd just like to say, this is a brief overview. On May 11, I'm sorry, March 11, Tuesday evening, it'll be at the Footprint or General Membership Meeting at the Fireside Restaurant. We're going to do a more comprehensive presentation. We'd like to invite the council in, as well as any members of the public who would like more information on this program. Certainly isn't a reinvention of the wheel. It's actually a very simple premise. It's just law enforcement, better utilizing the resources that are out there to try to pull some of these homeless folks out of the cycle of recidivism. And there are some success stories to be had, and we'd like to share those on the 11th. So, thank you very much for allowing us the time for this presentation.
Thank you for making the presentation. Do we have a question?
Sure.
One thing we've talked about several times is what sometimes appears to be a conflict between your effort and the effort of some of the homeless organizations, unintentional, but kind of moving in different directions. Have you found good cooperation or willingness on a part of these organizations to join in?
I know exactly where you're going with that, and we're really at the infancy stage of that. And yes, we have, we've gotten, we've realized there is a tremendous thirst for this type of program out here, and we've gotten great cooperation. A lot of the organizations, I think you're referring to, are, they're more or less, in our view, enabling the situation and giving, giving a homeless person less reason to want to accept help. Why do they need help? They get water, they get everything they need down there in the riverbed, whereas if we could steer them more appropriately to a resource, they can help get them out of homelessness. And some of their success stories are fantastic. You know, we've gone back and interviewed someone who these gentlemen have contacted, living in dirt bunkers in an empty field, normal people who lost their lease and ended up homeless, over a year, living in a bunker in an empty field, contacted by the Hope team in the pilot phase of this. They qualified for housing, they got housing. We went and interviewed them a week and a half ago on the front porch of the house that we put them in over a year ago. It was fantastic. You know, to see that kind of success story, it makes a believer out of anybody. You know, those folks are no longer homeless, and they have not been contacted 15 additional times over the past year for living or trespassing on property, or the many other reasons that a homeless person is often contacted and may be arrested by law enforcement.
Here's your hope.
Absolutely, no pun, what pun intended. So, yeah, thank you.
We have hands up to ask questions. This is not a public session, it's not agenda item. We're not going to take any questions of the Sheriff's Department on this item. Thank you. Any comments from council? Thank you, Sam, for bringing your team. Thank you for the presentation. We will now continue on with the agenda. The first item on the agenda is an appeal hearing. It's A1 on the agenda. The city council appeal hearing called here, the appeal of the planning commission's approval of PLN 13-00021, a site plan, and a conditional use permit to construct a new convenience store, fueling station, car wash, conditional use permit to allow for the sale of beer and wine within 300 feet of a residence within the, within the residential district, tinted parcel map to allow for the creation of three parcels from one existing parcel, and a variance to allow for the sale of single-serve alcoholic beverages with an environmental exemption on property located at the southwest corner of Mojave Drive and Village Drive. Appellate Creed 21, in care of attorney Corey Briggs. The applicant is circled, say, stores. This comes to us from the planning commission. We have three items that are involved in the same appeal hearing. It makes it confusing, and so, my request is that we will have a staff presentation to clarify this, as well as, if possible. And secondly, then the council handle each of these separate, so there can be a full discussion on each of the items, with a full understanding of how one may affect the other. And, and after the presentation of the staff, then, we will open it up before the council's discussion to, to the appellate and the property owner. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I may be able to make this really easy tonight. The applicants have had discussions with the appellant, Corey Briggs, and with the document drop that was done tonight, they haven't had an opportunity to review it all themselves. And both of them, I believe, are requesting continuances tonight. So, we'd like them to come up. No staff presentation in, and offer their request for...
Which one is the request to continuance? All three subjects?
A1. A1 is Circle K. That representative is here. We heard that they would like a continuance. A2 and A3 are both the same project, the Chevron on Highway 395, 395, excuse me. And they would also like continuances for both of those. So, but I'm not sure for how long or what period, so...
Okay, and I, and I understand. But on, on a part of this, we have a parcel map. And a part of the appeal process is that, according to the city's master plan of streets, the street has to be widened and improved. The applicant is requesting that that portion be waived, which has nothing to do with the generation of electricity on site. And then also, the single beverage container has nothing to do with the other two, only is affected if the business isn't built. But the business could go forward if one of those is approved and the other two are denied. So, but however, in spite of that, the applicant and the appellate are both requesting that all three items be continued?
The appellant is okay with whatever decision we choose tonight, according to their letter. The applicant, I'm not sure whether they want to approach the waiver of the street improvements tonight, or whether they want to continue that as well. So, staff is prepared to discuss that portion of the appeal if the applicant would...
Well, then... Mayor Cox, if I might, I mean, we should keep A1, A2, and A3 entirely separate. A1 is the item right now, which is just the Circle K, and I believe that applicant is asking for...
Oh, there's three items within the Circle K. There's three items within the one. And I'm talking about the subject matter being separated, so there can be a full and complete discussion by the council to understand the issue. and complete discussion by the council to understand the issue.
I'd recommend perhaps that you open the public hearing, since it's a notice public hearing.
Well, if the staff is through with the presentation, I will do so. If staff is finished with the presentation, are there any questions of staff?
Actually, she would like to speak on the widening. So with that.
Then we're going to go ahead, and we'll go ahead and hear the whole thing. We'll open the hearing, it may be necessary to open it and continue it, but we're going to open the hearing, and we will hear from those individuals that want to speak on item A1. The hearing is now open.
Actually, I do, I can give a little bit of background if the council would like it on the item.
Go ahead.
The project is the Circle K, it's at the southwest corner of Mojave Drive and Village Drive. The planning commission approved the project with a suspension of the street improvements, and the applicant appealed that request, and they're requesting before you tonight a waiver, meaning they don't have to ever put those street improvements in. Staff put three resolutions before the council tonight, which are kind of tied to the original, the original appeal, and maybe this is Andre's help. Briggs filed an appeal for this project. The applicant missed the deadline to file an appeal, however, since Briggs' appeal conducted the whole project, they're allowed to discuss this item. If you approve a waiver of the street improvements for this project, then in effect, you're making the arguments for Briggs in that it's not consistent with the general plan. The general plan says that Mojave Drive needs to be a certain width, 124 feet, a super arterial. If you waive that requirement, it's not consistent with the general plan, it won't be able to handle the traffic that the general plan, the traffic studies have shown are necessary for that area, and therefore it would be inconsistent with the plan. So staff recommendation would be that if you grant the waiver, if you agree to waive the project, then you need to also grant Corey Briggs' appeal, which would deny the whole project, because it would then be inconsistent with the general plan, which is Corey Briggs' part of his appeal.
Question, staff. This is two lanes in each direction, the same as Palmdale Road, so is that why Palmdale Road is in violation of everything and they can't build any buildings there? Oh, wait a minute, they are building buildings there. So you want to explain how they can have two lanes on a major road and it's okay, but two lanes on a not, so a major road is not okay?
I would defer that to engineering, either Brian or Sean Gaiman.
Love to hear the explanation.
Mr. Mayor, is this, is this time to pose the question?
I think staff has to explain.
Sure.
This, I really do, because I don't know how I could make a decision to approve or deny when I'm looking at the same situation all over the city, and there's no objections to it.
Question?
Sure.
I don't want to sound like piling on, but it is the same issue. I was curious, so I went out and I drove Mojave this afternoon, just because I wanted to see, I couldn't remember that it was wide enough for three lanes, but I drove from Elavato towards 395, and there was three lanes in both directions. Turned around and came back, and it was two lanes. And from Elavato to Amargosa, it's two lanes, but there is a development, real estate development on the south side of Mojave that comes right to the sidewalk. I cannot imagine how we would put a third lane, eastbound lane on Mojave, past that development, and then between Amargosa and the freeway, there are a couple of more. How in the world would we put three lanes in that section of Mojave Drive even if we did insist that they do their widening? I'll try to, excuse me, I'll try to address Mr. Cox's answer. A question first with my answer.
Please give the name and your position.
The distinction between.
Please give the name for the record and the position.
Ryan Moore, city engineer. The distinction I would make between where there is existing development and vacant property, if you take Palmdale Road as an example, yes, it's true that on the master plan, it shows Palmdale Road as a, we call it a modified super arterial, fitting six lanes and three, three through lanes in each direction eventually. You'll notice on sections of Palmdale Road where there has been vacant property with new development, it has been widened to the master plan in places. You also notice, as you've noted, in other places, such as near I-15, there's existing development, and you would have to widen that section of roadway, possibly even acquire additional right-of-way, even with substandard lane widths, even with lanes narrower than 12 feet. Now, to answer your question, Mr. Kennedy, about the Mojave Drive and the adjacent development to Village, the existing development, it's true that to fit a super arterial into that section, you would have to widen, you would actually have to acquire some additional right-of-way. There are some parking lots adjacent to the road there, and most likely some spaces would be lost to accomplish that widening, even with substandard lane widths. So there are, there are some existing constrictions there. Ryan, that development, if you, we looked at it on a Google satellite map, and if you look at the span from Elavato to Amargosa, that development probably consumes half of the space of that entire section of that road. I mean, we'd have to move houses and condemn walls to get a third lane, or you create a goofy jog in it. I can't imagine how we'd ever do that.
No, we wouldn't have to move any houses. That section, most of it actually is, hasn't been developed yet, a lot of it is undeveloped, but I've looked at it, and you wouldn't have to be moving houses.
Well, that means you have three lanes to two lanes to three lanes to two lanes. I mean, that's, why would we ever do that?
No, you could fit the six lanes in, that's what I'm telling you, but you'd have to acquire additional right-of-way next to, on the commercial development that's close to Village Drive.
I'm sorry, would you repeat what you just said, please?
You could fit six lanes on Mojave Drive as a super arterial. It'd be what we would call a modified super arterial, which would be a narrower section, but it would acquire some additional right-of-way. However, it would not require relocating any homes.
Well, we looked at that section of Mojave, and I don't see how you could get additional right-of-way there. Where would you get it? You can't.
I'd have to sit down with you and go through the details, I could show you.
I think in short, you have to move the center of the street northerly, where that development is on the south end. You have to move the center of the street to the north a little bit, acquire the property immediately north of the current roadway, and it would shift the travel lanes northerly.
I think, I think there's going to be some more questions, but I have questions, and I'm not going to hold it up here, of similar instances all over the city. And I know in one instance where we have a width of street, and then we have a development with a wider street, and then we go back to the narrow street, it's created, in my opinion, a dangerous condition, and the likelihood of condemning houses to widen the street is never going to exist in my lifetime, and I'm not sure why we're doing that. Have we ever considered creating these conditions? I got a master plan, got to comply, or somebody's going to sue because they want to check. That's not good enough. When we consider the health, welfare of the people and the people traveling on the road, we've got to make the right decision for everyone that's also fair. So, and it's more than just this one, it's all over the city, and I think we have to address it. There may be good enough reason to continue the whole thing, but we're going to concentrate on this one as best as we can. And so it is your opinion, then, that the master plan is three lanes in both directions, and there's sufficient widening that is, could occur that would accomplish that in this area? Is that correct?
Yes, but it would acquire some additional right-of-way where there is adjacent existing development, just to the west of this particular property.
I have a question, but I'll wait until we hear from the applicants and the property owner that relates directly to the subject, but it'd be inappropriate to ask it right now. If you, council, forgive me, I'll hold that question. Any other questions, staff, at this time? Remain closed, please, gentlemen, and we're going to open it up to, this is item A1, and so we have the appellate, we have the property owner, and we have some cards on A1. I think the first one is Rona Druev. I'm sorry, I probably really messed that up.
It takes some practice. Okay, good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor and staff. My name is Rona Druev, I'm the real estate development manager for Circle K Stores. I want to just state for the record that we are asking for a continuance on the appellant's appeal, Creed 21, to be reviewed at a later time, and that I will be speaking on behalf of the street widening and our request going forward, so, just for the record. I do want to begin and say that, you know, we have all worked very hard on this project and are anxious to add another store to the city of Victorville. Our customers have been extremely loyal to us, and we truly feel like we're a part of the community. I'm hoping that we can get this new prototype built and set an example for future development in the area. To that effect, I personally want to thank staff for their efforts in this process and respect them and their decision as they, you know, follow city guidelines and procedures. Unfortunately, we do disagree with their assessment on our request to waive the off-site improvements. And I do agree with you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Kennedy, that, you know, there is a severe safety issue, and that's our concern. We have two concerns with the widening. The first is safety, and we are being conditioned to widen that part of Mojave Drive. That portion encompasses less than half a block between Condor and Village Drive. The likelihood that that development next to us, that motel/coffee shop, will redevelop and complete their improvements in the next five years is highly unlikely. It would require them to eliminate all of their front parking spaces, which I believe would be against parking ordinance in the development code. You have to have a certain ratio. The intersection itself is a three-way intersection, as you know, and Village Drive dead ends into the Mobile Home Park. And we believe that the widening and addition of a lane will cause a traffic hazard, as shown, and I have a visual, I know that you guys were talking about it, I don't know if I should just pass it around, or it'd be easier for you to see. We have a rendering of our, okay. I'll have Alex, he's our architect, show that to you.
Doctor, where everybody can see it.
Yeah, we, oops, not very much light there. Light's in this direction, but, possibly? Much better, I don't know, but it's a disadvantage to the people on this side.
Okay. Our site only encompasses half that block.
Would you, for this picture, simply point at the site in question, it's in the light area, but.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interrupt for a second, they do have an option of placing that photograph right in the center of that table, right where that little box is, and the IT staff can put it up on the large screen behind you.
Let's see what.
Just put it down there, and we'll see how it looks on the big screen.
Okay.
It should be able to pop up on your small screens as well. Give us just a minute. That's the camera directly overhead, so if he physically points to some location on there, it'll show up on the screens as well.
Edit for a second. There we go.
He'll probably do some zooming. There we go.
There we go. And point to your project, please.
Yes.
No. Yes. Go ahead with your presentation, please.
So, where did I leave off? If we were required to complete the improvements and add the lane, and I could point that out to you, it's a little, I don't know if we can zoom in a little bit. And we do, however, realize that Mojave was designated as a super arterial in 1988, and it is now 2014, and although we hope for additional development in the area, it will take time to generate traffic, and it only will begin with new development in the area. So, in that effect, you know, we have dedicated the required amount of land for that, you know, future time, whenever the city feels that the development in the area has taken off, and those improvements need to be made. Our second concern is with economics. As businessmen, men and women, you understand that every project comes down to the justification, and does this, you know, investment make sense for our business model, you know, as Circle K, is it feasible for us? Can we afford this? I mentioned before that this site is not part of a heavily-traveled four-way intersection, it's not Main and First. Therefore, the traffic impact greatly affects our sales projections and what we think we can achieve at this site. When you compare that to a location that's located on Main and First, those projections greatly differ. Additionally, the new Victorville ordinance prohibits us from selling singles. So this alone is a detriment to our business, and it puts us at a competitive disadvantage. And when you add on the additional cost to complete the widening, we just can't afford the project. We will be spending $3 million to construct the site, and that does not include the cost of the land. And as you may or may not know, this site is challenged, as I pointed out, that the drainage channel runs right through it, so we are going to have to build a bridge over it, which we knew that cost going into the project when we first engaged in discussions with the seller, so we anticipated that cost. But as you know, construction costs are going up, and they're not going down here in California. So it's greatly affecting, affecting that number. The developer, and this project was CUP-approved, I'm sure some of you know, back in 2008, and nothing has been done since then. The developer did not have the resources to make it work, and I'm here today on behalf of Circle K, you know, we still have limitations, but we're willing to make it work if we can get the city's help and, you know, figure out a way to make this work. And keep in mind, anyone else who goes into that site is going to have the same issue. It's, you know, commercial, they're going to want the same things, it's going to be the same thing, they're going to look at the justification of the project. So please understand my appeal to you today, that it now comes down to the economics and just not being able to justify it. I truly believe that this project will have a significant positive impact to a severely underdeveloped and underserved area. Additionally, it will create increased revenue for the city. Our site on Palmdale Road generated $371,000 in 2013 in sales tax revenue. That's just one store. So in addition to bringing development with this project, the sales tax revenue will also create added value for the future progress of the city. So I personally want to see this project succeed. It's a project that has been challenging since the beginning, both internally with senior management, and now here before you today. So I truly believe that we will be successful here, and the community, and the city will greatly benefit from it. Our new prototype building is something that will be an example for our development to come in the area, and I just can't do it alone, I need your help in understanding the nature of our business and what is being asked of us, so, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The next card that I have is Diana Carloni. Oh, and by the way, it is your request that this item be continued, is that correct? Just for clarification, that's all.
The widening, no, but the Creed 21 appeal, yes.
Okay.
Because we just received those items.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I want to clarify on my card, it says A1 and A2.
Yes.
I want to speak to A1, I also want to ask for continuance on A2 and A3.
Okay.
But with respect to A1, my comments are brief. I wanted to support the efforts of Circle K Corporation. It's hard when a developer picks a challenging site. Yes, there are a lot of requirements, there are a lot of findings that have to go into meeting the general plan, that staff has to make those findings, but the bottom line is that the city has always been business-friendly, it has found a way to work with its developers. I think that there are alternatives that can be worked on this site. I think that this is a good project that can go forward, and I think we need to assist developers who do take challenging sites, because one size doesn't always fit all. And if we remember that one size doesn't always fit all, and we can fashion relief in accordance with the principles of the general plan, the objectives of the city and their strategic planning, and bring in a good, solid corporate resident to the city, I think it benefits everyone. So I would ask that you please consider the request of Circle K Corporation that staff and council and the applicant all work together to meet the requirements of the general plan to avoid challenges, and that this project be allowed to move forward as requested.
Thank you. Is there anyone representing Creed 21 or Corey Briggs that want to, let's, do we have information that they want to continue that also, or not? No. Okay. Do we have anyone else that wants to speak on item A1? At this point in time, can we close the public hearing or do we keep that open?
I would recommend you keep the public hearing open since there's been a request to continue the item, and I don't know how you'd bifurcate the suspension issue versus the appeal.
Okay, we'll try to resolve that. What I'm going to do is I'm going to technically leave the public hearing open but close the testimony at this time, and then we will decide as a part of the due deliberation of this council body whether or not to continue it or go ahead and take an action. I have a question of staff. I noticed when I looked at the site, curb gutter and sidewalk has been constructed along the project area. I understand that once the city of Victorville requires curb gutter and sidewalk to be put in, the property owner has met its obligation, and if the city changes its mind, it's a city responsibility to widen it. How do you view this, Mr. City Engineer?
I don't know who installed the sidewalk, the curb and gutter originally. I know the sidewalk was added later by the city, but it doesn't meet the commercial width. But the master plan of streets in our Title IX is very clear in the requirement. If widening is required, widening is required in accordance with the master plan.
When was curb gutter sidewalk put in?
I don't know. I know the sidewalk was put in within the last, I would say, six years. The curb and gutter, I don't know when that was installed.
We, if I understand what you said, we have known that would have to be torn out and we expended public money to put the sidewalk in anyway?
I can't answer that. It wasn't my decision to put that sidewalk in.
We developed the street plan in 1988. Was curb and gutter in at that time?
I don't know.
Well, I believe that, as a council, we have to do the right thing, and I think that we have instances where we have changed our mind on the requirements. It has long been held, as I understand it, and council, you can wait in at any time, if we set the standards, whether it's on a lot split, tentative tract, building permit or whatever, and the property owner complies, they have met their obligation, and we can't come back later and say, "Well, we want it narrowed, we want it widened, we want..." They've met it, and it becomes now our obligation to expend that. In this particular instance, you still see it's the property's obligation to take out existing curb gutter and sidewalk and widen the street and then put back in curb gutter and sidewalk?
Yes, that's very clear in our code in Title IX. Street widening in accordance with master plan is a code requirement.
Then, since we showed on the map that approximately half this block is already developed, about halfway westerly, all the way to Condor, and the businesses exist, how would you propose that that be widened?
Well, as I stated before, there would have to be some right-of-way acquisition from the properties immediately to the west of this development.
So, the city would acquire the property, and how would you force the property owners to tear out curb gutter and sidewalk that they've already paid for and widen the street and put it in again?
If the property didn't redevelop, it'd be a city responsibility to acquire the right-of-way and widen the road.
Mr. Mayor, personally, I won't speak for myself. The only way I could ever support imposing this requirement on the development would be if the engineering department could show us a drawing of how that road, how Mojave Drive, is going to be expanded to three lanes with all the existing development there. If they can produce something that shows us how they could do an expansion to three lanes on both sides, I'd at least be willing to consider it. But if they can't do that, why on earth would we expect one property owner in that little segment to put in a third lane? It just makes no sense. So, I would insist that staff come back with something that's a realistic drawing, something that can show us how you could possibly do that and how you're going to overcome those narrow sections where development is already there.
Mr. Mayor, if I could remind the council, the recommendation of staff is not to require them at this time. That's what the code says to do. The recommendation of staff is to suspend that requirement until sometime in the future, such as when the entire street is going to be widened to three lanes. You don't have staff here saying, "Put this road in now." You have staff here recommending to suspend that requirement.
But that's a part of the appeal.
Yes, it is.
It seems like a distinction without a difference.
Well, I agree. For clarification, are you requesting that they dedicate the right-of-way at this time but not put in the improvements, that's staff recommendation?
Well, the decision of the planning commission was to require the dedication along with this application.
I'm sorry.
The decision of the planning commission was to require the right-of-way dedication along with the approval of this development, and then to suspend the widening to a later time.
For who to pay for?
It would, the widening would still be a developer responsibility, but they would have to enter into a construction improvement agreement, and it would defer the actual widening until a later time.
Okay.
So, they would put in parking lot curbs gutters now to complete their project, and then at some future time have to tear it out and put in the third lane?
They would use existing curb and gutter.
That was the action that the planning commission took, yes. So, that they would build their project, they would construct their onsite improvements, they would dedicate the additional right-of-way, they would construct their site in such a manner that the future road widening could take place at some future time.
But at the moment, they would finish their, that property with the current configuration. In other words, curb and out to, they wouldn't make the space for a third lane. They would finish their property all the way out to the second lane. Am I right?
I don't know the details of what their site plan shows, but basically, if the improvements were suspended, the curb gutter and sidewalk would stay in the same place it is today. They would design their and construct their site such that it would accommodate future road widening, and then at such time that widening would be required, they would be responsible to pay a per rata share for their portion of the widening cost.
Okay. I understand it.
That's how the, that's how the agreement works.
Questions, Ms. McAcoran?
Andre, to the appeal, the appeal is by Creed 21. Creed 21's not here tonight. I understand the applicant is appealing certain requirements, but because the appeal is all one thing, we can't take these items separately, in my opinion. Am I wrong there?
No, I would agree. The appeal here, the planning commission decided to essentially approve the project and require the road widening and suspended that requirement to some future date. The appeal was by Creed based on CEQA compliance issues. Because it is an appeal hearing, however, the applicant has the opportunity to provide information. You, as an appeal hearing body, have the option of basically taking any action, but since there's a request to continue that portion of the appeal, I don't know how you'd bifurcate it and make a decision on one issue right now and still continue the issue with respect to the CEQA challenges.
Well, and I would agree. I think we've got some legitimate questions here tonight that, you know, as to when this was actually constructed, what's currently there now, I think we could, in the time that we would have a continuance, get answers to those questions, as well as to yours, Mr. Kennedy, as to how they would ultimately build it out. And I'm really concerned with staff's comments that if you grant an appeal or grant the waiver, then all of a sudden you're making the case for Creed 21. The last thing I would want to do is make their case. And I need some better clarification on that, more time to actually understand that. I think continuing all items with relation to this, or all sections of this appeal makes sense. I don't see how this council can take portions of it and make decisions on it tonight.
I absolutely agree. Let me clarify. I wanted them separated for discussion so we'd have a full discussion on each of the items, but they are so linked, and with one item affecting the other, I don't think we can move on one and not the other because they affect each other's. But in the discussion, it's really important, I think, to have that kind of discussion because I know staff is doing the best they can to comply with our master plan of streets and do the right thing. I believe we have dangerous situations because we have streets that go from three-lane to two-lane to three-lane to two-lane, and you hit the end of it and there's no place to go. This would be creating a situation where if you went straight ahead through the intersection at Village going westerly, you hit the traffic signal. There's no way to miss it. It ends up dead center in the new lane. And so, therefore, you get into the lane and you get out of it real quickly, so the lane is, would merely be constructed to turn into the business and would serve no other purpose. It couldn't. I don't know if we, if we are required on every new business that's on a major collector or super arterial or a major arterial, I think we would create dangerous situations. And I think this requires a full discussion of the council, and I think it requires a policy of the council. I know what staff is doing. They're following the current rule. They're doing the right thing. They are making the appropriate recommendation. But we have instances where I think we would cause more problems than if we did that. I really sincerely do. And so, in regard, since we're going to continue with this, continue this item, I believe we're going to continue, we have to. We have too much information here that we haven't even read. I think this is an item that we need to look at. And to indicate that we're going to create a bottleneck because it's only two lanes in that area doesn't prove out because one of the major streets that we have is Palmeo Road, and it's two lanes in each direction as near the freeway. It just doesn't occur. It'd be better if it was three-lane. It'd be better if it was four or five-lane, but that's not what we're dealing with. We're dealing with the technical issues. In regard to if we delay this and we end up in a lawsuit, so be it. But I'm not willing to create a dangerous situation and imperil the traveling public to satisfy an attorney's wish that, never mind, I won't repeat that, it's not worthy of repeating. But the fact is, we need to take a look at that, and we need to make sure we're doing the right thing, not only for the property owner, not only for the appellate, but the general public. The other issue here, we can handle separate, but we still have to talk about it. For example, an existing beverage container. I don't know where that came from. I have no idea why it's there. I don't know who set the law. I don't know if it's state legislature, I don't know if it's the council, I don't know if it's a recommendation of the sheriff's department. I'd like to see the data on that. Some of the super drinks contain alcoholic beverages, so what is it, 3%, 1%, 5% beer? I mean, I don't know where this came from. I want to see the data that also shows that we have traffic accidents or an unsafe public because people can buy one bottle of something. I've never heard of that, I'm sorry. It may be so, and if it is, then that's the way I'll vote, but I've never seen the data. I want to see the data. I know the city council passed, adopted that. I don't know the information they had. I'd like to see it. I read all the planning commission's information. There was no discussion on that. Nobody asked for that kind of data. And so, I think there's a lot of information that if we're going to make a just decision, that we're willing to argue in court. And I believe that this council should be prepared, once we are convinced that we have made the right decision, we ought to be prepared to argue it in court and not back down. And that's why I want to make sure that we do the right thing and then we stand behind it.
Would you allow me to make one comment, Mr. Mayor? I just wanted to comment on the road widening. I know the applicant, in their opinion, stated that it would create a dangerous situation, and I take the opposite view. I'm a registered traffic engineer. I think it would actually enhance the safety. The, I commented on this in the planning commission hearing as well. The additional lane, and we've done this on other projects in the city, provides width for ingress and egress, and then it would be a right-turn lane onto the south leg of Village Drive. So, in my opinion, it would actually enhance the safety, and I stated that in the planning commission meeting. So, I just wanted to make that statement.
Yeah, draw me a diagram on that because I didn't, if you're going...
If I could point on the exhibit...
Going toward the freeway and you're traveling east, how do you get a right-turn lane going to Village, which only goes to the north?
We can get the photograph put back up on the screen, I think you can show...
Goes into the Mobile Home Park.
Right.
Well, you provide a right-turn lane into the Mobile Home Park, but there's not enough of traffic there that's affected. It's not a through street. Dead ends in the Mobile Home Park.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm going to run my finger along here. This is, as you can see, this is the through lane that is here today, two through lanes that continues to the freeway, to the I-15, and then over the bridge. The widening here would add an additional width. This would provide for ingress into the site, and it would be a right turn into this leg of Village Drive. If that's clear. So, the through traffic would continue, as it always has, on these two through lanes, but this would provide an additional lane for a right turn onto Village Drive. And you can see that this site also is proposing a driveway off of the south leg of Village Drive. There's also a driveway over on the west edge of the property. As traffic came out of here, it could use this additional width as a merge length to merge into the existing lane. In my opinion, that would enhance the safety. It wouldn't create a dangerous situation, and I stated that before...
I think you're right. I think it could be marked and striped to show that, and possibly at the next meeting, you can draw that street map up and present it to the council so that we can have a better understanding of that.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council members? So, it's not for the freeway because we don't have any intent of going across the street and moving the signal and taking the service station property. But that's a new one that I didn't find in the data either, so I want a chance to look at it. Council members, please. This hearing is technically open, so that we can continue. If we're not going to continue the meeting, then I'm going to close the council meeting. So, council members?
Is there a date that we want to continue this to, or...
I would recommend probably and ask the applicant, I would assume, since it's real estate development, they want some quick resolution of these issues one way or the other, but then staff has a lot of information to compile as well.
Before we take an action, I have a technical question. Sorry, understood the planning staff that the appellate missed the deadline for filing the appeal?
No, the appellate is Corey Briggs. They did appeal timely. Circle K did not appeal the decision of the planning commission timely.
Okay.
However, since this is an appeal hearing, they have the opportunity to provide information, and you have the discretion to make whatever decision you like.
I now understand it. I'm sorry, I didn't understand it before, but I would also like that to have in writing so that we have in front of us on what the legal consequences are for this council, whichever way we go, at the next meeting, please. Well, we have a motion. We're going to keep the hearing open and continue it, appears to be the will of the council members. We need a motion on second to do that. This hearing would be, we have a motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem McAcoran, second by Council Member Kennedy.
Do you have a date within which to continue it too? Is it going to be to the next meeting at this point? Then you can obviously continue...
I would just continue the next meeting. If staff and applicant aren't ready, then they can request that it continue, be continued, beyond...
I, yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Now, two weeks. On item A2, planning staff. Want to continue that also?
Your Honor, your honor, Mr. Mayor.
I think I got demoted, no.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, council members. It's been a long day.
I'm sure it has.
I am here on behalf of the applicant and appellate, Munameta. We are here on matters A2 and A3. We have been working on both appeals. We did not get you information timely on A3, which has to do with statistical information and data behind the service of alcoholic beverages, so we're requesting a continuance on that matter. We're also requesting a continuance on A2 because we have been working with the appellate, Creed 21. They have agreed to meet with us. We'd like an opportunity to work with them on their concerns and to be able to attempt to resolve this appeal and perhaps even the second one before the next date. Our request would be to continue...
Now, these are not public hearings, but they're appeal hearings, but we open it after the applicant and the appellate. So it is a request to continue this also. Council members, uh, wait, make sure we have no one else to speak on this item and I don't think I do.
Mayor Cox, as a technical matter on item A2.
Yes.
Uh, the appellate is actually Corey Briggs and we're not aware that he has requested a continuance nevertheless, I think, given that the affected party does.
Yeah, I do have communication with Mr. Briggs as late as about, um, well, number one, the appellate is Creed 21.
Right.
Mr. Briggs represents them and has advised me that a, a continuance would be acceptable to him. I can certainly provide a copy of that particular email to the city if they prefer to have it on record. Um, but he had no objection to the continuance for purposes of our meeting. We had requested.
For the record, we would like to receive that so that our records are clear.
Okay, I, I will provide that to Mr. Webb.
That, that would work.
By email so that he has it. Um, I also wanted to bring the council's attention to a letter that was submitted this afternoon. It's marked A2. It's a letter from my office regarding a condition of approval that we were requesting. We want to continue with that request as well, so please keep that as part of the package because we will be making that request at the next hearing.
I, I see no reason not to.
And I would again recommend that you formally open the public hearing on both A2 and A3 and then continue the items and you can probably do those together since they affect the same project.
Thank you very much.
At this time, um, so this would open the appeal for A2.
And I, you could handle A3 at the same time if you.
A3, we'll do them both at the same time. I haven't, I don't have a card nor a request to speak on either item and I think, uh, Ms. Carloni has covered both those items. Are there any questions from the council? Any, if not, it appears that it's in everyone's interest to continue this item for more information and to give, uh, um, the property owner, the appellate and applicant both an opportunity to work out any differences that they may have. I think that's in our interest also. And so.
Mrs., if I might, Mayor, Mrs. Carloni, is it correct that, um, Creed is asking also to go to April? To continue to the April?
I had requested a continuance of 30 days. I didn't specifically say 30 days to Creed 21. Uh, I can certainly attempt to confirm that as well, but.
I would assume it wouldn't be problematic if you wanted to go to the 30 days.
Um, do we, should we, should, nobody has left the room until A1 is to the next council meeting. Should A1, A2, A3 all be continued for 30 days?
Uh, maybe you should ask the applicant on A1 if that's okay with them. I mean, it's, it's real estate development. That's always got a time pressure on it.
Yeah, that's fine with them.
Is that fine? Is that, we have the maker of a motion that initially was, uh, two, two council meetings. You want to amend that motion to continue that for 30 days before we can, on A1?
Yes, I'm fine with that amendment.
We, with the second, the person who seconded the motion, would they amend that motion to second the 30 days rather than two weeks?
But it's the first meeting in May?
April.
April.
Well, I hope that's not April 1. No, nevermind.
It is April 1.
But there may not be exactly 30 days, but it's the first meeting in April, right?
Meeting in April.
April Fool's Day.
Yeah, boy.
Yes.
That's what I said.
We'll go against the grain and make it not April Fool's Day.
Well, okay.
Yes.
So first of all, vote on the first motion, first, on the amendment for A1.
Counsel, do a, a voice vote on that, please. I've already entered the, the votes on the computer.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, now we go back to A2, A3, uh, and that would also be a motion to continue all the items continued, contained within those, uh, for 30 days.
Or to April 1st.
Or April 1st.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tem McEckern.
Okay.
Mayor Cox, you vote, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, everyone for being patient. This is very complicated and we want to make sure that everyone is heard and that you have your input on this, so thank you. The next item is, the next item is public hearing item. These have been appeal hearings. This is a public hearing. Request by St. Mary's to reduce the road portion of the development impact fee for the construction of the hospital. And of course, we can't do that because there's a master plan and we'll get sued, right? Mr. Portrait, would you come up and address this item? I'm not going to purposely walk into a lawsuit here.
Mayor, members of the council, the development department merely processes this application for the applicants and the road portion of the diff would be handled by the engineering division, so we would ask that Brian Gangler come up and address it.
Mr. City Engineer, would you come forward, please?
Boy, Sean, you're getting off real easy back there.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, uh, as the agenda item stated, some time ago, the management of the St. Mary Development approached staff and they requested if, uh, we could do an analysis of the road service diff. Uh, their argument was that because a hospital is a special use, it doesn't really fall into any of the categories such as commercial. It has lower trip generation. And so we took a look at that and we realized that they had a, a case on a technical basis that yes, a hospital would generate fewer trips in the peak hour than a typical commercial development. And so I'm merely here to, uh, answer any technical questions. I'm not, I'm not here to give a, a recommendation for a reduction, but if, if you were to ask me, does a hospital generate fewer peak hour trips than a commercial shopping center? It, it certainly does. And so the memo I prepared, uh, gave an estimate of what that reduction would be. And our road service diff is based on the peak hour trips that are generated on the road and it's related to capacity. Roads need to be a certain width, a, a four-lane road or a six-lane road based on the capacity they need to carry. And our interchanges, our arterial roads on our road service diff list and all the cost estimates associated with those are the development of our road diff fee. And so it is related to the, the peak trips of a, of a project.
The Frontage Road going to be reconstructed and modified in any way?
Amargosa Road, yes. They are required to widen Amargosa Road to the master plan.
So the, so there's not going to be a question here that it's going to violate our master plan of streets?
No, they're complying with our master plan of streets.
Full compliance.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Mayor, let me add one quick thing. I think I mentioned it, uh, two weeks ago at the meeting, but, uh, it, it appears on paper that we're giving up just about a million dollars should you grant this request. What you're really doing is you are agreeing with the applicant should you choose to grant the request that there's actually a million less dollars in impact, so therefore it's not necessary.
Do you have any disagreements, uh, Brian, with the, with the calculations, the estimates, the, the math, so to speak?
No, I was actually the one that prepared the, the estimate and the math and the St. Mary team agreed with my analysis.
Any impact estimate you're comfortable with?
Yes.
We have a card, uh, oh, I'm sorry, there's other questions. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Brian, um, obviously in, in your report, you allude to the five different areas that diff is developed on and how we charge our fees. Um, and the argument is that hospitals are a different type of use and that they could have their own fee system. We've also had that same argument when it comes to parking, if I remember correctly, with Desert Valley. Um, are other cities within the county doing that and how does that affect the nexus study for Measure I and all that?
I'm not really familiar with, uh, many other cities and their diff programs. I'm, I'm somewhat familiar with the other ones in the Victor Valley, but I know in general, they usually have only a, a few categories. The problem is, uh, if you had many different categories, you'd be trying to determine for every project how many trips it generated and that'd be very difficult to do. And so usually cities just have a few categories like we do. We have, I think, five and, uh, they apply that to whatever the development is, if that answers your question.
Yeah, well, it, it does and it doesn't. I mean, I, I'm curious, are we kind of treading new water here, uh, by, by creating a, a new separate structure for hospitals, um, whereby it's not being done anywhere else in the county? That's my one question. My, my second question though goes to a legal issue and, you know, we, we just saw the expansion of Desert Valley Hospital. I'm sure there were development impact fees associated with that that they paid. Um, do we run the risk of all of a sudden having the other hospitals in the area come back and say, well, we paid our fair share, we want our portion back?
Well, I think you certainly run some risk of that. Whether it's successful or not is another question. You have in your development code, the ability to consider a, a request like this based on information being provided. And ultimately, it's a function of, uh, establishing a nexus between what you're basically providing and the amount of the fees. So in this case, I think it's justified as to whether or not people that have been treated differently previously may have some recourse. Uh, you know, you have to look at that on an individual basis and see. Certainly, there may be some exposure. Uh, to, excuse me.
A new category so much as an exception to an existing category. Would that be right to say?
I, I would say that, but to get back to Mr. McEckern's question, we haven't done an exhaustive survey of the diff in the county, so we'd have to do that. I don't really know if they have special categories for hospitals. We'd have to research that.
And, and Councilmember Kennedy, you're right. This is an exception that is available to anyone who develops anywhere in the city should they be able to make the argument that they don't fall into one of the five categories. So certainly when any other hospital expanded or, or developed, they had that option at the time and either chose not to or, or maybe they didn't, didn't know.
I, I believe, excuse me, it's not likely that we're ever going to get another hospital, but, but I think that this council would always want the staff to notify anyone who's developing, if they have options, what those options are in whatever they're building, to consider it as a commercial and they pay the fee and find out a year or two later that they could have applied for an exception because of the uniqueness makes people suspicious of government. We're relying on staff to assist and be a part of the growing community to help every applicant that comes to the counter. I hope they would always do that. My understanding is that's exactly what you have been doing and I know you will continue to do that and I think that would speak really highly of our staff to have people who are developing to know that that exists, that we would assist them. That's correct? That's it? Thank you.
Brian, you did do that in this case, correct? Good, according to the staff report, they were notified that they could apply for this back when it went before the planning commission.
Yes, they were.
They did not do it at that time.
Yes, they were. They were notified about, they got a copy of the code, they were aware of the procedure and, and they knew that well in advance. Yes, they did.
And my comment wasn't to suggest that we didn't or did do, uh, that with any other developments, the, such as Desert Valley. I simply don't, I don't have the facts in front of me.
And I don't.
I would assume that they did, but I didn't want to make that affirmative statement without knowing it 100%.
I agree. Are there any questions of our city engineer? If not, I have another card from Mr. Robert Kilpatrick, who may not wish to speak since this is going his way, or he may try to talk us out of it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the, the council, and I, I, I believe the public hearing has been opened then and.
Hearing is still open.
Yes. Again, um, my name is Rob Kilpatrick with the firm of Hall &amp; Foreman. Uh, address is 14297 Cohen Street in Victorville. Uh, here this evening representing the, the, our client, uh, St. Joseph Healthcare Systems and St. Mary Medical Center. Uh, the staff has indicated, yes, we are here before you this evening to, to go over requests for a, uh, an exception or a, a reduction in the diff, the road diff fee for the project. And I do want to point out that, yes, we did work with staff. They have been very cooperative in this and they did bring it to our attention. However, if you can recall, we had similar, uh, environmental and legal issues that occurred right after the approvals of our project. So we were a little bit, uh, I want to use the word distracted, so it, so it kind of didn't get a chance to give you that request within 10 days of the approval. So we're here before you because also we did work with staff. It took time to, to, to work with staff on what would be a fair and reasonable request for this. So, uh, I would like to point out that, uh, that as staff indicated, what we're trying to do here this evening is not so much request a new category or a reduction, but really be able to, let me summarize it, that, um, using trip, you know, the trip generation rates, uh, we've determined that a, the, the hospital, which is 249,000 square feet, has the equivalence in terms of trips of a 116,800 square foot commercial center. So really before, before you this evening is not to, they're asking you to create a category for hospital. What we're asking for is that we classify the hospital as a 116,800 square foot commercial center for calculation of the road portion of the diff. So to answer your question, we did research other cities and in terms of their diffs and no other cities have hospitals because again, there aren't, there aren't that many that come up. So as we, as staff has pointed out, we did the calculations and determined that again, that the 249,000 square foot hospital has the equivalent of 116,800. And then when you apply that number times the calculation for the road diff, that's the number we'd like to have applied. So that is actually the formal request, not to create another classification, but to, to classify the square footage. So that, but based on that, your direction then to staff, then that when we come in for the building permit for the hospital or, and actually the fee is due after, at C of O, to the occupancy, that's what the fee would be based on is 116,800 square feet of commercial.
Okay, thank you.
With that, we respect the request, your approval of our request and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council members? If there's no further questions, I'm going to close the hearing on this item. Hearing is hereby closed. Council members, if there are no further questions of staff or no further clarifications, chair is open for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Garcia.
This was a motion, as everybody voted, to approve.
Yes.
Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tem McEckern voting no.
We have, uh, next, uh, item is the consent calendar and we have additional information regarding C11, but I'm not sure why we have the additional information. Madam Clerk?
You have a letter before you from the risk manager addressing, uh, concerns raised by the person, uh, the recommendation of staff is to deny the claim. The claimant, however, uh, has a pretty long-winded discussion of why they believe their claim is legitimate. You have before you risk, the risk manager's response to those claims and again, the recommendation would be to deny this claim and refer it to staff, consistent with typically the procedures that you always implement.
Okay, yes. Is that going to require a separate action because consent can be approved at one item and so therefore, uh, wouldn't, if it was included to approve all of these, wouldn't that be automatic that this was?
Unless you have specific questions, I'm going to pull the item. You could consider this as part of the, uh, consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, the risk manager in his last discussion with the, uh, appellate, uh, or the claimant, uh, seemed to believe that the claimant was going to appear before you tonight to, uh, make a statement or a comment or request that it be pulled for discussion. So that was the purpose of the letter, just so you have some background.
Okay, well, if Mr. Isaac Tovig is here, we will pull that off if he wants to make a comment, but I have no cards, excuse me, indicating that they want to address the council. So the staff recommendation is to deny and this additional information is denied, refer to staff and that would be included in one motion to approve the consent calendar. If there are no further questions.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item C10.
C10, we will, that will be pulled. Uh, any requests by the council members to pull any items? If not, chair is open for a motion for, on the consent calendar from C1 through C12, with the exception of C10, which is pulled and will require a separate discussion. Chair is open for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor Pro Tem McEckern.
Yeah, the reason I requested C10 to be pulled is I, um, I had the opportunity to go through the minutes, uh, that Carol Lee, uh, provided for our strategic planning session as well as the report from our consultant. Um, and in the last couple of weeks, we've had, um, somewhat of a brouhaha around here with respect to the item that came before our planning commission, uh, that would have implemented residential design guidelines and standards, um, which had widely been discussed, I believe, at the, uh, strategic planning session, but also increased lot sizes to a minimum of 10,000 square. of our strategic planning session. I was advised that it was requested not to be recorded. I'm not really sure why that request was made. We record everything this council does in these chambers. We video record it, we auto, audio record it, and any, and even in the cases where we cannot video record, we auto, audio record. But I am thankful to our city clerk that she took minutes. I went back through these minutes and looked at all of our discussions, where we did discuss things as bringing the residential design guidelines and standards up. Part of our overreaching goal was to higher value residential, prettier, cleaner community, pride of ownership, improved roads, higher design standards. But throughout this, and in looking at what next steps were, both in the minutes and the report from the consultant, any of the plans to implement and accomplish these goals, objectives that would move towards accomplishing these goals, were to come back to the city council. And I'm at a complete loss as to why staff charged straight to the planning commission with such an overreaching, in essence, amendment to our development code without coming back to the city council, one. But, two, nowhere in this documentation, and this is why I wish I had the recording, because I'd like to know, was I not in that meeting room where one of us said, "Let's increase lot sizes to a minimum of 10,000 square feet"? I don't recall anybody saying that. I actually called Bill Webb and asked him if anybody said that. He told me no. I'm just at a complete loss as to, one, where that came from, and two, why this didn't come back to this, this body for discussion prior to going to the planning commission. Even on a night that is not even regular planning commission night, it went to the planning commission on a night where the state of the county was being held, and most people wouldn't even have paid attention to this. As you can imagine, this council, members of this council, I'm sure, I know I got plenty of calls, were wondering what the heck was going on, and did we have control of our staff. Quite frankly, I didn't know that staff was going to bring increased lot sizes forward to the planning commission. I knew that we were discussing residential design guidelines, standards, and that ultimately that would come forward, but at the quickness that it did, I, in looking at all the documentation we have on our strategic planning session, it does not appear that that's what this council was expecting.
Mayor Protem McCacken, members of the council, the staff responded to the desire of the council. We did indicate during that meeting that we had some ideas, some plans that had already begun to be formulated with regard to some of the comments based on the last year, comments about wanting a safer city, wanting safer neighborhoods. So, we did indicate that we would be coming back in April with an action plan for all seven items in the strategic plan, but that some of the items, because they were already almost ready to go and could be tweaked based on the conversation, could come sooner, and that's what happened. As to how the 10,000, 10,000-foot lots came up, it was not, there was zero specificity as a result of the strategic plan. The direction that we were following was a request to bring an item forward to the council for discussion, and our goal was to get to the planning commission, because that's required by law. Any kind of a development code amendment, general plan amendment, has to go through the, through the commission, and I'll let Andre speak to the legal aspect of that. It was a little bit awkward to do it that way, but that's what the law required. So, our goal was to bring an item for discussion that was meaningful, not simply a discussion of a discussion, but something that your professional staff have put together, that they believe will accomplish the goals that were spoken of during that meeting. The desire the council expressed many times in that meeting was to have these discussions in public with members of the public, the development community all present, and in order to do that, we believed that the best action was to take an item to the city council for that discussion. This is a baseline for the discussion. It's not etched in stone, and so that, that's how we got where we are, was that the law requires it to go to the commission first.
Does that mean when staff wants to bring an idea forward, they're going to bring it for, in the form of an ordinance? When are we going to know when this is just an idea, and when are we going to know it's a really serious ordinance? Can't discuss this stuff before it turns into an ordinance?
We can discuss it in this case, because we already had some of this written, and it could be very easily tweaked to bring, be brought forward as a discussion starting point. That's the option that we, that we took. The other items that are in the strategic plan that was discussed aren't necessarily a development code change, so it wouldn't have to go to a commission or anything ahead of time.
Let me add a question to that, just kind of in line with what Ryan's talking about. I saw a staff report, don't remember which one, but it referred to, this is inconsistent with the strategic plan. Well, we had a strategic planning session, and we talked about lots and lots of stuff, but I don't remember the anything I would call a strategic plan came out of that. I'm waiting to have it come back to us, that we may formulate into a more formalized plan, but I'm not aware that we have a strategic plan. We've had strategic planning discussions. Am I missing something?
There was an item on the agenda that summarized that discussion. It was on the last agenda that was approved by the city council. It would, I would agree. I would not say that it is a strategic plan. It's a summary of that discussion. So, and I think, I don't know exactly what comment you're talking about, but I think what they're trying to say is that, you know, whatever this item was, is in keeping with what was discussed and is, you know, listed in that summary.
Other comments from council members?
I, I have to agree with Councilman McCacken regarding, that was not my understanding of what was supposed to occur, and I know the city manager is saying that it's required by law, and I really believe that's a cop-out. He, I think staff failed to follow council's direction on bringing it back, so that we can decide what direction we're going to go in, and I think more of an apology is in order rather than excuses, because that, we were very clear in our planning session of what we expected the staff to do and bring back. And I was taken aback by, you know, receiving phone calls and not understanding, you know, and being accused of things that we were proposing and doing, and not giving the public the opportunity to, to speak or to be a part of, and that was not the direction.
Any other comments from council members?
Well, I just, again, I'd like to know why we, why we didn't record it. I've had certain answers, but it just doesn't make any sense. The thought that someone could take a comment made by a council member in a strategic planning session and somehow twist that to turn into a campaign mailer that says, "This person's against this," or "This person's for this." I mean, we sit up here twice a month, sometimes more, they could take anything we say and twist it. So, why, why that would be justification not to record it, it almost gives the sense that by not recording it, then the context of that meeting, the, there would be a tremendous amount of liberty taken with what was said by individual members of this council in order to be able to move so quickly on such an item and take it to the planning commission. I could see that that could be the reason why, in fact, that it was done, was so that, you know, we had this overarching goal, and staff ran with the specifics. And quite frankly, I, I know very well, being on the planning commission for almost eight years, we had been working on residential guidelines and design standards. They have been sitting there for a long period of time. I don't question that at all. The lot size issue, that's a huge policy decision, a huge one, that all of a sudden, you throw at the planning commission, and we had the chair of the planning commission there at the strategic planning session. She's quoted as saying that we ought to involve them in any future discussions, because most of the stuff we discussed goes to the planning commission before it comes to the city council. Boy, was she right. You know, she was basically foretelling what was going to happen within three weeks, three, four weeks of us having that meeting. So, I just, I don't understand why it wasn't recorded.
And to answer that question, it was the recommendation of the consultant, that because it's a, more of a brainstorming session, comments could be made that didn't have a lot of forethought and, and, you know, in somewhat of an abandon. That was the recommendation that was made. I discussed it with the mayor, and ultimately decided not to record the session. Certainly, we've learned from this. We do intend on having additional sessions, and fits the will of the council. We're happy to record them in the future.
Councilmembers, I think it's clear that we will record study sessions for, for obvious reasons. Secondly, I think that the items discussed have to come back to the city council. Because of the information that's, that's not technically correct, and the way it has been discussed, at least based upon the calls that I've received, we need another study session as soon as possible. There's several items, and we, I don't think we need to try to spend hours and talk about them all at the same time. The biggest issue appears to be the lot sizes, and there are literally thousands of lots, and people have invested money who are currently under the impression that, that we're going to change their lots, which throws out all the money and engineering and everything that they've expended. We need to clarify that. The only way we can clarify that is for the city council to sit down in a study session, address that issue, lay out a map of the city, all of the lots that have currently been approved, what the entitlements are, which property owners and builders and developers can continue with prior approved plans, and any changes that would occur in the future. I like the idea of 10,000 square foot lots, but I don't think we discussed that at the study session. I don't think we agreed on it. I dislike the idea of a 4,000 square foot lot, and hopefully, we'll discuss the reasons to not have those or to have those. In the past, the city council has approved 4,000 square foot lots because of quote amenities. Except, I own a house 4,000 square foot that has no amenities anywhere near it, and it has a 10-foot backyard that the real estate person said, "Learn to live with it. You can't sell this thing." Why the city ever did that, I don't know. So, my goal, not only to clean up the city and have code enforcement, quite frankly, I'm very prejudiced as to never, ever, ever have small lots unless there are amenities that justify that. People need space. They need the amenities, and we don't need to force people in the streets. If you have no yard whatsoever, that's where everybody ends up, and then we create another problem. So, this requires further discussion by all the members of the council, by the questions of the staff, by the questions of the attorney, on who, on which projects may continue and not have to worry. And it would seem like before we proceed then, we would notify those people, or we'd put a map available on where we intend to make changes or amendments, and where those people who have spent a lot of money acquiring land and going through the planning commission and getting the entitlements, that they are protected. That hasn't been clarified. There's a lot of misinformation and a lot of misunderstandings that has occurred, because we collectively, we have not had the opportunity to sit down and finish this process. And if you'll read all the minutes, we, almost every one of us said, "We look forward to future meetings in order to finalize these discussions," and I think that's what we need to do. And if there's no objection from the council, I would like to, you set a study session for a week from tonight. If it's available, please check your calendars or continue this meeting, and so that individuals who have questions, get those to the city clerk as soon as possible, keep it at a minimal, come in, have a full discussion, but on one particular item that we deem more important than the other items, and that doesn't mean we're going to not discuss the other items, but at least try to get them straightened out one by one and take the most important ones first. I happen to think it's lot sizes, but other members may not agree, and so majority rules. Comments from the council members, please.
I'm available March 11th for a workshop.
I can do 11th.
Me too.
Me too. All right, then we will.
Mayor Cox, if I might, and this is a question for the council, I guess, whether or not the planning commission wants to be involved in that as well. Any, any development code amendment has to go through the planning commission process. You have to hold a public hearing on it, make recommendations, which you can either adopt or not. So, it's your decision as to whether you want to do that separately or not.
This will be billed as a study session, and certainly, we need to have the staff that's aware of this process, and the planning commissioners, or any other entity that's involved directly in this to be notified.
The two planning commissioners have said they'd like to have a joint meeting with us, and I don't.
I don't, I don't have any objections to the joint meeting, if they're available, but I think we need to move very quickly, and if they're not available, but they want the joint meeting, we can continue that meeting also. I agree that a joint meeting is very important.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I thought I was available on the 11th. It just happens to be my son's birthday, and I'm taking him to Disneyland, so there's no way Dad's canceling that. Sorry.
I absolutely understand.
You have a priority problem, Ryan.
Yes, I do. Just glad I looked at my calendar. How did I forget that?
Well, comments from council. There are other dates and times, but.
I'm available Wednesday, the 12th.
Yeah, I can do the 12th.
I will be available Wednesday, the 12th. Okay, we will then, should we call a special meeting, Madam Clerk, or continue this meeting?
In the evening, late afternoon.
In the evening.
Yeah.
Well, that's great.
The planning commission meeting starts at 5:00.
That'll work out perfect, then.
Yeah, that actually would, because it should, there's not that many items.
Wonderful. They will be here. Don't let them leave.
Mr. Mayor, can I clarify one question? There's been discussion about coming forward with just a simple workshop to discuss the, all of the issues. So, there's kind of two options that we need to know, or I'd like some clarity. Are you wanting us to bring the specific development code that was proposed to the planning commission forward for discussion and modification, change, throw it all away, or are you wanting more of a workshop where we simply discuss what design standards you'd like us to bring back at a future date, or what development standards and what lot sizes you would want us to consider bringing back? I will apologize for rushing this item. The thought that we had was to bring something meaty to the council, and that meaty thing was a code that we'd already developed, rather than simply having a wide-open discussion without some starting point, so.
I want all the council members to weigh in on this. I think it's important that you have your input, but the outcry that I had was lot sizes and the fear that everything, all the work and money that had been expended was going to go down the drain. Almost everyone that I talked to said, "Well, go look at the latest development. A lot of these standards are already being incorporated by most of the builders, and it's not a major issue." It is an issue in regard to locating the garages off-street in the back and having a lot of adequate size to drive the vehicle in size, but I think once we have the lot size discussion, that will follow. I'd hate to, I'd hate to try to have it all at the same time, but council members?
I think I, I would like to know what is today, without a massive amount of detail, but just some general views of how the city is laid out and what lot sizes tend to be. I'm, I'm really reluctant to get into any fixed judgments about lot size. After this came up, I looked at my house, and I don't think many of us would call it a shabby development, and I went out and stepped it off, and that lot is 5,500 square feet. Now, we back up to the golf course, so we have a wonderful amenity. It makes sense. It works. All, all I, I would like to know what is now, and if staff has a recommendation, if there's a direction you'd like to go, I'd like to know what it is. But, but I'm really reluctant to get tied into any specific lot size, I think.
And, and the law wouldn't allow you to designate that. You would be advising us what to bring back at a later time.
Yeah, I think so.
I think, I think the council has talked about the size of the lots, and that's a concern. I think development centers are a concern, but we have to start someplace and get the major ones out of the way. I, I, my request is that we put lot size on this next study session. If there are other items, then council members submit them, and we'll put those too.
And, Mr. Mayor, just to advise the council, the lot size is, it certainly can be handled separately, but the, the package of the development standards, as well as design standards, feed into the discussion about the lot sizes. And Mr. Mayor, just to advise the council, the lot size is, it certainly can be handled separately, but the, the package of the development standards as well as design standards feed into the discussion about the lot sizes. If you have a change in setbacks, you necessarily would need to have larger lot sizes to accommodate those changes. So that's why it was all packaged together. And if I could make one comment, you'd, you'd commented a couple of times about possibly developers coming to you and saying that, you know, they spent all this money on, you know, recording maps and, and doing design work and that it's, it's all being thrown away because of lot size change. Just to clarify, that issue is very specifically discussed in the staff report that went to the planning commission, that if you have a recorded map, your lot size does not change. If you have a vested map, your lot size does not change. If you have a tentative tract map that has not yet recorded and you record it before it expires, your lot size does not change. So it's a bit of a straw man, straw man type of argument that I think some developers are throwing out there to say, "Woe is me," but the reality is that the law is on their side and we actually, we went short of what the maximum potential impact we could have done.
Well, I'm, what, what kind of has surprised me is individuals who have a lot at stake being very vocal with me that this would be a mistake in shutdown building and are indicated they're willing to come to this council meeting and say so, and other people in the community, both residents, both business leaders and homeowners saying, "You're on the right track. Don't give in."
Yes.
This is not going to be easy because there is some strong, strong community support for what we're trying to do. So it's pretty interesting.
After my comment about my lot, I have to say that we bought the lot next door because I didn't want anybody building the place next door. So we really have-
So how big is your-
A big house on a little half of a 10,000-foot lot.
Yeah, and if you add the golf course to the back of that, I mean, you're like-
I seem to recall that you're relatively good friends with your neighbors to the other side, are you not? Do you not have a gate that connects the two yards?
Oh, that neighbor, yeah.
Jim, Jim, where, where do you park your RV?
That's, that's why about the lot.
Well, I would like to see in this workshop, obviously staff has the expertise and the skills to bring our, our planning session to fruition and to, to make things happen. So they have some ideas. I would like to, to hear what they are. Obviously, land issues are, are, are on their mind and I, I definitely want to hear why they feel the necessity to do this and how it's going to benefit the city and how it's going to hurt people who, who have invested, you know, and, and does it really hurt them? I know that they have a certain amount of time to develop and they haven't. So I would like to understand all of that and see what we're talking about percentage-wise in, in land and how it's going to affect. And then people that, that, that don't have tract maps on those land, I understand it's like 43% of residential raw land that do not have tract maps. What's proposed for that? And, and then also, I would like to have more than one study session. Obviously, land is going to be a huge, huge issue, so we got to get it out on the table and decide what we're going to do with that. And then I think then we can go into building codes, sewers, all of that other stuff. But I would like to have the staff put together every Tuesday, you know, a meeting on our off Tuesday, a, a session and no more than two to three items on there that, that is going to help with improving building standards. That's what I would like to see.
I concur with that.
Yeah, I'd concur too. I don't know that, that in one planning session we could accomplish or even discuss everything that was proposed. There's so much there and, and like you said, lot sizes feed into the rest of it because a lot of the rest of it you can't accomplish unless you have certain lot sizes. I, I get that. So I think the lot size issue has to be addressed first and foremost. You, Mr. Mayor, might want to put time limits on these things because they could go forever. And we, and I agree with Councilmember Vias. I don't think this is something that you accomplish in one meeting. It's going to take several meetings and this is just one or, or two portions of, of some goals that were set during strategic planning. So obviously more to come, but, but yeah, we, we may need more than just next Wednesday to get this done.
I agree. I'll quote from the minutes. Mayor Pro Tim McEckern said he's looking forward to the next steps in the process.
I am.
Obviously, it's some-
Well, I, I was under the understanding that we were supposed to have additional sessions and I've been waiting for, for that. And then this comes up and we still haven't had any sessions. So I hope we do get them started.
I, I think we're back on track and I think this will work out fine for everyone.
We need to approve item 10.
We do. It was pulled off of that. It was pulled off for discussion. We had the discussion and so still waiting approval.
I just want to make it clear. When I said every Tuesday, I meant every Tuesday that we're off, you know, it's not, don't combine it with this meeting.
Understood.
Okay. That's every Tuesday, isn't it?
And I understood that.
Second and fourth Tuesdays of the month.
Exactly.
Maybe we'll take the fifth Tuesday if there is one. Maybe we'll take a little break.
We have a motion to be had for second.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim McEckern, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
And we did handle number 11 already, right, Madam Clerk? So we are now to-
Yes.
Well, we're through, are we? No.
The items.
That was just the consent calendar.
That was just a consent. Well, maybe it's because I'm wanting to be through.
Mr. Mayor, sympathy for our auditor who's been sitting patiently at the back of the room and has a long drive home. Could we move D3 to up next and let him take care of business and move on?
I thought it was to receive and file and I already filed it.
Oh, but I had a 30-minute discussion planned. No, I promise, Ken, I won't do that.
I did not realize that they were reading here to comment on that and if that's appropriate, we'll move that. Is that D3, Councilman Kennedy?
Yes, D3.
Okay, Coffer.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that accommodation. Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, I'm pleased to present to you the results of your annual financial statement audit. I am going to start off my presentation by making a few comments about the financial statements themselves and extracting some data from the financial statements. And on the first slide, on this slide here, I've summarized the assets and liabilities of the city as of June 30, 2013, and compared it to the financial position as of the end of the previous fiscal year. And as you could see, the city has experienced a significant improvement in its financial condition from the previous fiscal year, including a substantial increase in cash and investments. This slide here shows the reason for that substantial improvement. In fiscal year 2013, the city had total revenues of $236 million. The city had total expenses of $183 million. If we remove the effects of depreciation, which is a non-cash cost to the city, you could see that there's a significant, there was a significant amount of funds available in fiscal year 2013 for the city to pay down its debt. And of course, a significant component of those funds came directly from the Carter-Burgess settlement. And as you are well aware, the city have fulfilled its commitment to use the Carter-Burgess settlement to pay down its debt and to increase the reserves of the city and to pay off inter-fund loans, precisely as was indicated and declared by the city when the award was made to the city. If we look at the general fund in isolation, we see a similar improvement in financial condition. You, again, you could see that the cash has increased from the prior fiscal year from 1.7 million to $4 million. And you could see that the fund balance of the general fund has increased from 3.7 million to 5.3 million. This slide here summarizes the financial activity of the general fund for fiscal year 2013. The general fund had revenues of $49 million that were in excess of the expenditures of the general fund of $45 million. This excess of $3.5 million, after deducting inter-fund transfers, resulted in an increase in general fund reserves of $1.5 million. If we look at the general fund revenues for fiscal year 2013 in detail, the first thing you notice is the line at the top. The tax revenues of the city were almost $3 million higher than the previous fiscal year as the local economy continues to improve. And then two lines from the bottom, you could see that there are a small piece of the Carter-Burgess settlement was allocated to the general fund, which essentially went straight to the, to the cash reserves of the general fund and increased the cash position of the general fund. If you take a look at the general fund expenditures, you could see that despite the increase in general fund revenues, tax revenues, and despite the one-time windfall from the Carter-Burgess settlement, the city has held its general fund spending substantively unchanged from the prior fiscal year, reflecting the fiscal discipline that the city has been experiencing for the past five fiscal years. I want to remind the, the public and city council that the purpose of a financial statement audit is to evaluate the risk that the financial statements are prone to significant misstatement. The auditor evaluates that risk by conducting tests of the accounting records. When those tests support a low risk of significant misstatement, the auditor concludes that the financial statements are fairly stated. I also want to remind, remind you that in fiscal year ending 2015, there will be a major change in the accounting standards for local governments. The government accounting standards board is going to require for the first time that all local governments put in its financial statements a liability for the unfunded pension benefits that have been promised to employees for services rendered to date. CalPERS is currently in the process of calculating that liability for all of the jurisdictions in California that are serviced by CalPERS. We reviewed the results of the audit with the audit committee in detail and throughout the audit, we provided feedback to management both in written form and verbal form with respect to the accounting procedures of the city. I'm pleased to report to you that our tests support an opinion that the city financial statements conform to government accounting standards and are fairly stated in all material respects. And that concludes my, my presentation.
Mr. Kennedy, you had questions?
I have no questions, Ken. Thank you so much. I appreciate the slides because it summarized the important information. If you read the detail, you get lost, but the slides were wonderful. Thanks so much.
Other comments from council members?
We're still here.
Yes, you are still here, sir.
I told you.
Yes, that's right.
Did I not say that we'd still be here?
Exactly.
Thank you for acknowledging that.
Councilmember Garcia, any comments? Councilmember Vias? Okay. Thank you very much.
You very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We will now go back to item number one. Item number one is a request to approve an award to PlaySmart Servicing, Inc. for the removal and replacement and installation of rubber safety servicing at Los Haciendas Park. No questions. We have a motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim McEckern, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is from Director of Public Works Sean McGlade. Award of Professional Service Agreement to Atkins North America for Preparation of Highway Bridge Program Funding Application.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item we just handled, which gets us then to item number four. We have two resolutions. Resolution 1411, Victorville Water District, 14002, City Victorville and Victorville Water District establishing provisions relating to utility account liens and superchain resolutions, number VWD 11-006 and 11-016.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Just one, one question on this. And I, I had a resident recently contact me about a problem he had with the water billing. He discovered that he had a $600 balance from, nobody was exactly sure when, on a property. And it was kind of a confused conversation. I don't have all the details. But there have been enough problems in water billing that I would like to make absolutely sure before any liens are placed on any properties, we give a, we give the, the resident an opportunity to get these kind of things cleared up. Because even the answers he's gotten on his questions didn't clarify much of anything. So I'm really, I, I will support this and I'll vote for it, but it's, it's a, a power of government that I'm, makes me a little nervous when I know that some of our water billing has just not been what it should be.
Other comments from council members? Ready for motion?
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Item five, waste, tar, clean and grant application.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim McEckern, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
We are now at the public comment section. My apologies to those individuals who come to address, who came to address the council. This is a very difficult meeting. We had a lot of very important items that we had to get through. And so it's only 8 o'clock and by changing our council member meetings early from 7 till 6, we, we hope we cut down the time that people might have to wait. I spoke with Mr. Alcortio very early. He was disappointed that he couldn't speak first. Is Al still here? He, he was a little upset because he didn't want to wait through the whole council meeting. But we find it's in the best interest of the people who pay a lot of money for appeals and hearings and have their professional staff here because we can't respond to the public anyway. So Al, my apologies, but it's going to remain. The second, Scott Megawich, you indicated you, you spoke at 5 o'clock. You wanted to speak again. Is Scott here? Yeah, well, it says here that you wanted to comment again at the 7 o'clock meeting? No? Well, if it's only if it's important and you want to, it's, this is your opportunity.
Compliment you on protecting property owner's sovereign rights and looking out after your constituents regarding land development and land use, which is probably the biggest thing facing all city councils. So a good job and way to work together and, and make the, the meeting move smoothly, but fairly.
Thank you. We appreciate that. We had one other card, but the individual said, "Okay, we'll do it next time." At this point in time then, I have no further cards or no requests from individuals to speak. E2, reports from the city manager.
That has no additional comment.
Reports, E3, reports from the council members.
I have one.
Yes.
I was wondering, when are we going to get our former mayor, McEckern's picture up on the wall out there?
The one with the bars in front of it or the-
The painting, you mean?
The painting, yeah. I understand that it's all the former mayors up there and I went to go look there the other day and I didn't see Ryan.
Well, they don't have enough wall space, so they have decided not to-
I have seen the painting. However, it actually takes time for a curing process and then the, the painter actually has to take one more or two or three more looks to make sure that it's just right before she is comfortable with us releasing it to the public. So-
Oh, so you are, are working on it?
We are working on it, yeah.
Get started on Jim's.
I was unaware there was a reorganization coming.
Kind of meeting behind bars.
I had it coming to me. I had it coming to me. Other council members, comments?
I just wanted to-
I had raised-
Just wanted to mention that the last VBWA meeting, we approved the reading of the ordinance for a fee increase to the, all the customers. We authorized- We authorized the general manager to finalize the state revolving fund loan for the subregional plants, and we approved the release of bid for the subregional plants, one in Hesbury, one in Apple Valley. That, we approved those readings, the first readings will be tomorrow morning, for anyone who's interested, so that, those projects are moving forward.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of comments, I'll make them quickly. I've been made aware very recently of an individual who has either filed a claim or is going to file a claim in line with the questions that I raised, oh, some months ago. My understanding is that we have a fee, and we collect the fee and provide the service, it remains a fee. If we establish a fee and we collect the fee and we do not provide the service, or it can't be provided, or it's not that the general benefit, it becomes a problem. I know that in the, the water rates, in order to conserve water, we have a $15 fee, if you use 20 cents worth of water, it's still $15, but if you use one gallon more than that allotment in that section, then it's an additional $15. I, I hope during the budget session, we can look at tiering that, because once you use one gallon more, there is no incentive whatsoever to save water, because you've already paid the penalty of the $15. I want to look at that, I think that we can devise a better plan than that. Also, we have a lot of houses that have been, to close them, and if you shut the house off, you still pay the sewer fee, we collect the sewer fee, we do not give it to the VVWR. That's a major problem. I believe, the attorney will advise you, that there is a portion of that fee that goes to maintain our sewer system, and we can continue to collect that on houses that are empty, and we can lien the property, but we cannot collect the full fee that we have no intent to forward to the VVWR. We have nothing in our ordinance that addresses it, and I think we need to address that. We also have a contract with the, with the individuals who collect and dispose of the garbage, the same theory applies, and yet, I think Doug has done his best to step in, where individuals have indicated that the house is empty and they're not taking the services, that hasn't been charged, but I was an individual that had months of delinquency fee for a service that wasn't used, and I, I chose not to fight it, after all, it would look kind of silly for the mayor to be fighting the staff. I honestly, so help me God, believe the staff was so wrong on this thing, that I, we, we need to address it, because I don't want to see anybody else, and I have to pay those fees. And then I ended up with a $370 fee, where we had thought all the utilities had been shut off, and everybody complied except the city. And then I had a request, and I said it jokingly, right before Christmas, wanted the water turned off, and staff said, "Nope, we, we don't have anybody to do that, the house has been sold, people are moving in, I don't want to have to pay their water and sewer and garbage, well, there's nothing we can do about it." And two and a half weeks later, I had to pay the bill for the new person, because they didn't shut it off and take it out of my name. Now, that's, you know, I can say it quietly and nothing happened, so I'm saying it publicly, and if necessary, I'm going to start agendaizing these items. Sorry about that, but the public is going through the same thing I'm going through, I think I have an obligation to speak up. We have no further business to come for this council meeting, thank you very much, everyone, for participating, spending the time, it was a difficult meeting, we got through it, I think the city's a better place for all the participation and the input, have a good night, thank you very much.